I call to order the special meeting, annual meeting for the York County School Board this January the 22nd and it's 5:00. Good evening and happy new year, everyone. We don't have snow. We don't know what's coming, the S-word, but anyway, it's always fun to look at and that's about the best thing for us, to look at plain. Dr. Shandor, I turn it over to you.
I disagree that it's fun to look at.
Yeah, it is fun to look at.
So we're happy everyone's back to school. This evening, we're gonna work through our election of our board chair and vice chair. So at this time, I open the floor to nominations for board chairman.
And I'm gonna nominate Jimmy Richardson to be our 2018 board chair.
Okay, is there a second nomination?
Second.
Oh, second nomination.
Second to the nomination.
Okay, I need a motion to close the nominations.
I move that we close the nomination.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ford, will you pull the board?
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Medford to elect Mr. Richardson as board chair and Dr. George seconded the motion and Mrs. Haywood moved to close the nomination.
Congratulations to Mr. Richardson.
And I'll do the vote call.
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
We now have a new board chair.
Congratulations, Mr. Richardson. Come on down. Have your seat.
You have your computer and your water.
I tied up on yours. I'll come back from my bag. Papa had one major move when he done with it, right?
That would be too easy.
Yeah, I'm going to get mine in my bag. That's good. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Not this time.
Changed names already?
Yes, did.
You're at it.
For short time.
Thank you, everyone. I guess now we need to open the floor for nominations for the board vice chairman.
I nominate Dr. George.
Second.
I move we close.
Second. Ms. Ford?
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Anderson and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to nominate Dr. George as board vice chairman and I will take a vote call. Dr. George?
Sure, yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Congratulations to our new vice chair, Dr. George.
It's gonna be really strange sitting all the way down here.
We'll reorganize upstairs. You stick where you are, we'll just move down once we get upstairs.
I'd like to say congratulations to our new board vice chair and extend a big heartfelt thank you to Ms. Haywood for her role in being our chair this past year and also a big thank you to Mr. Medford for being our vice chair. I'm looking forward to working with each one of you and hope that I can keep the lines of communication open as well as Ms. Haywood did this past year and working with Dr. George as vice chair. So now, Dr. Shandor. Yeah, I would echo that. Ms. Haywood, thank you so much for all of your support as well over the last year. Our team, I speak for everyone in the division, to say thank you for your support as board chair. I know communicating with you has been wonderful. I feel like we've really moved the division forward and you do a great job of navigating the waters as board chair. Mr. Medford, again, I know you're 17 or 18 years on the board. I appreciate you serving as vice chair and we look forward to still communicating with you even your little farther.
It is different way down here.
So we have a full agenda tonight, so we're gonna move through as quickly as we can because we have a meeting also. So our next organizational item is Resolution 18.01, approving the school board organizational business for the calendar year 2018. I now turn to superintendent for any comments. I know the school board members, I know you've had a chance to review this packet ahead of time. Were there any questions or comments relating to the resolution or any of the attachments?
I think you may want to look at because the committee assignments are a part of this resolution.
Yes.
So we need to look at that so we can undo the entire thing.
So let's go to the committee assignments if we can quickly. The Coretta WHRO, Board of Directors, I'm fine with staying on that board. That's the earnings day a lot of times and I'm available to attend those meetings. I'm good with that. New Horizons Regional Education Center Board of Trustees, Dr. George and Dr. Shandor.
I'd like to stay, remain.
Okay. I don't think I have a choice. Outstanding Youth Selection Committee, we don't have anything for Mr. Anderson. Is there any particular one you were looking at that you would like to?
I'm getting busy.
Yeah, I don't have a preference, whatever helps the board. I'd just stay there unless, you know, somebody else wanted to do it. I enjoyed it last year, so.
You could certainly sign, if Mr. Anderson was interested, you could do the alternate. Yeah, why don't we do that?
It's just a one-day thing is all it is. It's a two-hour commitment a year.
And the Virginia School Boards Association, Angel Convention Delegate.
And that's gonna be you and then Robin.
Would be me and the vice chair.
Yeah.
So that's gonna change. School Coordination Team Advisory Board, Dr. Carl James and Mark Sheerheart, we're gonna keep that.
Same as that.
Yes.
York County School Division Health Advisory Committee.
I can do that one. Just your days of the week for that and that, or this evening, what's usually the health advisory?
Evening.
Evening, okay. And then I can do that and if, who wants to be my alternate? Michael, you're interested in health advisory?
I would be, yeah.
Okay, so you can be my alternate to that.
Special Education Advisory Committee, Mr. Medford?
Yeah, we need an alternate for that because some of my travel does conflict with sometimes their meetings and so, but it does need a board member to be there. I think it's important to the organization and it's what they present and what they bring to the table, so I don't know if anybody can be a backup for me on that.
What are the meetings usually held?
They're evenings, four times a year.
I'll alternate.
Okay, perfect. The Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee, we have one of the board members, or two of the board members actually is all for that. I don't have a problem being an alternate for that.
Can remove me from that one.
And I'll take your place on that. And? And York Foundation for Public Education, Ms. Haywood?
I'll stay with that one, please.
Wonderful. How about an alternate for that? You are the alternate before Mr. Medford does that.
I can stay on there unless Mr. Anderson wants to serve on that.
We all can't say, Michael, we can't choose this meeting.
Okay, wonderful. So I think that takes care of our committee assignments.
Do you need a second alternate because of his travel schedule?
Well, I'm hoping to be, like this last time, I was planning to do the meeting until they closed schools, so I can still do that and if Mark is not here, I will call you.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so did you get all those notes, Ms. Ford? Thank you. So I need a motion and a second to approve the Resolution 18.01.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Ford, pull the board?
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Anderson and seconded by Dr. George to approve Resolution 18.01. Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes. Our next item of business is the consideration of approval of the Virginia School Board Association Code of Conduct for school board members. So prior to the meeting, all the members did sign that code of conduct form, which will actually take a picture of us after the meeting, so before you rush upstairs, we're gonna get a picture together for that. But basically, each year, the school board members sign a code of conduct and I'd like to read a few of the items from the code of conduct that board members have already read and signed. One of them that I'm reading is that I will come to board meetings and warn concerning issues under consideration. I will make policy decisions based on available facts and appropriate public input. I will communicate in accordance with board policies, public reaction, opinion regarding board policies and school programs to the full board and superintendent. I will refrain from using board position for personal or partisan gain to avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety and I will always remember that the foremost concern of the board is to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experience for all students in public schools in Virginia. So I need a motion and a second to approve the Virginia School Board Association Code of Conduct.
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Ms. Ford, if you would pull the board, please.
Yes, the motion was made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Mr. Medford to approve the code of conduct for school board members. Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes. So next, we have some presentations and the first one's gonna be the FY18 expected budget and FY19 budget. Dr. Shandor. Thank you, Mr. Richardson and board members. So Mr. Bowen, our chief finance officer, is gonna, he has two presentations. Actually, this meeting is all about Mr. Bowen this evening. He has a number of presentations, so you'll hear him a lot this evening. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Richardson, members of the board, as Dr. Shandor said, I have two budgets to update you on this evening and both will focus on the state revenue. The first is the FY18 expected budget. This information comes from the Governor's Caboose Budget Bill, which was released in December. Now, the Caboose budget includes technical adjustments to the standards of quality incentive categorical and lottery-funded accounts based on updates to student enrollment, sales tax, lottery revenue, as well as updates in participation in summer school regional programs and Virginia preschool initiative. Based on the state updates for FY18, YCSD can expect to receive approximately $305,000 more than what was originally included in the FY18 budget document. For YCSD, the additional funds are primarily a result of updates to our enrollment and updates to our student participation in regional education programs. I want to emphasize, these are not discretionary dollars. These are actually already committed. The school experienced an increase in enrollment at the beginning of the year, so we had to hire additional teachers in order to maintain our pupil-teacher ratio throughout the division. So these dollars we use to cover, primarily cover the salary and benefits of those teachers, but also to cover the increase in tuition costs as related to our students' increased participation in regional programs. And just briefly to go over the expenditures, we have, we have a couple of adjustments. The $302,000, which is the adjustment in revenue, is all going to instruction and then we also had some additional adjustments in the categories of programs of pupil transportation, operation, maintenance, and technology. And those are a result of inputs provided by staff. There's some shifting of positions that occur. We had some savings as a result of the new transportation software. We had some saving in bus driver positions. So we moved two bus driver positions. One stayed in transportation but was transferred to a mechanics position and then the second was moved to operations and maintenance for an electrician. And then we moved about 220,000, 223,000 from operation and maintenance to technology. Our cost for copiers and our print shop was in that program and that's really a technology expenditure. So just for the purpose of realigning our budget with the state's required reporting, that change was made. So with FY18 budget, any questions? I'll be happy to entertain. Let me move on to FY19 budget. If you recall, in December, I mentioned that there were a couple of actions that occurred at the state level that actually impacted the FY19, '20 biennial budget that the governor was releasing in December. The first action was that the state revised the local composite index for localities and as a result, York County's LCI decreased by .0083. This means that the state's share of the cost of education increase was shifting from local dollars to now state dollars. Second, the state completed its biennial re-benchmarking process, which updates the cost of education. So these two actions resulted in additional operating dollars for the school division. Also factored in in the additional dollars from the state is an increase, a projected increase in the enrollment of 160 students for a total of 12,730. Now, if the governor's budget holds, YCSD can expect to receive about $3.7 million in additional state dollars. Well, one thing important to note about the governor's budget, about $225 million of the general fund budget is based on Medicare expansion. This was a priority of Governor McAuliffe since year one and has never passed the General Assembly. So it's hard to predict what's gonna happen at this point, but $225 million will certainly have an impact. If that money's not there, it will certainly have some impact on the dollars that we're seeing on the screen. Second, it's still early in the General Assembly session. The House and Senate are both working on their amendments to the governor's budget. We really won't have an idea of what to expect from the final state budget until crossover occurs in mid-February. So when we present the budget, we will most likely be presenting it on the governor's budget, but knowing that there's going to be some changes before we get to a final. And I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Just the only question I have, are there any mandated expenditures coming our way that are gonna chop away at any increase we may get from the state?
Yes, with the increase in enrollment, 160, there'll be additional teachers that will be required.
Like VRS area?
VRS has actually gone down, so we will see a little savings in VRS. We do have some additional mandates with our special ed group and ELL. So we're still working through that, working through that process. And just as a reminder, we started a new budget process this year. We went out to the community. We asked for community's input. We had four community budget sessions. We also asked for those who couldn't attend that they would submit recommendations through our online portal. We also asked our directors and our principals to ask their staff what their budget needs were, thinking that there was going to be some additional funds available this year. And what we received was about 240 recommendations and suggestions. We had about 60 from the community events. We had 14 come through the online web portal and then the remainder came from, 240 came from the staff. And in total, it was about $9 million in requests. And there was a number of requests that came to us that didn't have a cost associated, so it actually was much higher than 9 million, but what was identified with the cost came in at $9 million.
I don't know if you said this or not, I missed it. Does the governor-proposed budget have any compensation built into it for an increase for staff, teachers?
Not in fiscal year '19, not next year, but in the second year of the biennial, there's a 2% proposed.
So he calculated nothing into FY19?
Nothing.
So what are your projections then for a portion of all of that 9 million, suggest about the community being budgeted for?
So staff have been working on prioritizing those needs, so we're working on that, working through that process right now and that will be revealed when the superintendent presents his budget next month.
Is there anything that worries you as we move into?
Nothing at all. Well, I will say the economy is good. I feel good that, you know, because the economy is strong, this has been one of the best budgets that we've seen from the state in a while, particularly because the local composite index lowered for us, VRS lowered for us. It was a re-benchmarking year, so we're seeing additional dollars from that process. So right now, I would just say, whatever happens with Medicaid will certainly impact, I believe, these numbers. So we'll keep an eye on that and as developments come from the General Assembly, we'll be sure to share those with you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bowen. Great report, thank you. If there's no other questions, we're gonna move on to the superintendent's recommendation for balancing elementary attendance zones.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Dr. Carl James, our chief operations officer, is now gonna provide information regarding my recommendations for balancing enrollment in the elementary schools. These recommendations are based on the recommendations from the Elementary Attendance Zone Balancing Committee that has worked on this for the last least five, six, seven months. A request to approve the recommendations will come before the board this evening at 7:00 if you're regular meeting. So I'll turn it over to Dr. James.
Right, thank you, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Richardson, the members of the board, tonight I'll share with you those recommendations, the superintendent's recommendation for balancing elementary attendance zones. As Dr. Shandor said, you've seen this information before about the neighborhoods that are proposed to be moved from two elementary schools to other elementary schools. The first one, of course, is gonna move neighborhoods, you can see here on the screen, from York Elementary to Seaford. And you can see the neighborhoods that are going to be moved and I also have given you a description of where that area is located. As you know, it's just nearby Bojangles on Ussus Boulevard and Route 17. And you see the neighborhoods that are gonna be involved. Secondly, here's a map that shows the area that we just briefly talked about and it'll also show, I've given you the name of the streets in each of those neighborhoods. Now, this suggests the movement of students from Yorktown to Seaford. The second part of the recommendation would be to move some neighborhoods from Graffin-Bethel to Coventry. Again, you can see the neighborhoods listed there as well as geographic description of the area that I'm talking about. Next, again, you'll see the map in the lower right-hand corner with the diagonal orange lines. That's the area that we're talking about, moving from Graffin-Bethel to Coventry. Thirdly, here you'll see the names of the neighborhood as well as the streets in each of the neighborhoods that are going to be moved from Graffin-Bethel to Coventry. Thirdly, here's a map of the entire school division and it shows the areas that are going to be moved and I've just discussed those. You can see it in the full map. So next, starting July 1, this will be the map of the elementary attendance zones because those areas, then if the board approves the resolution later this evening, this will be the map of the elementary attendance zones for the school division. One caveat I want to bring the board's attention to, the recommendation is that rising fifth graders and their siblings can attend that current elementary school. However, parents would provide the transportation.
That's something we've always done.
And as Dr. Shandor said, a resolution will come before you later this evening to approve the superintendent's recommendation for balancing elementary attendance zones. Are there any questions that I can entertain at this point?
No other questions. Thank you, Dr. James, for the, all the work you've done on that. It's been quite a big undertaking, I know, with the citizen involvement and everything you've done on that, so thank you. We now want to move on to the strategic plans update and goal number five, objectives relating to resource allocation. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Mr. Bowen is now gonna update you on goal five, allocation of resources.
Mr. Bowen?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Richardson, members of the board, this evening, going to review two objectives under goal number five. Goal number five states, the York County School Division will maintain efficient, effective, service-oriented operations and support achievement in safe and secure environments. The first objective states, resources will be allocated to maximize student achievement. Annual budget documents will include quantitative and qualitative information pertaining to how the allocation of resources maximizes student achievement. Throughout the recession, one of the biggest challenges for the school division was how to maintain effective and efficient instructional programs in the face of the fiscal crisis and this was particularly challenging for YCSD because we had one of the lowest per pupil costs. Looking at the information on the slide, we can see that from 2010 to 2016, the school division was in a constant state of budget reductions. Every area in the budget was affected, but staff went to great lengths to protect instructional programs as much as possible. No teachers lost their job because of budget cuts. Teaching positions were eliminated, but were done so through attrition. The adopted budgets for fiscal years 10 through 18 included staffing to meet the per pupil, the pupil-teacher ratios set forth in the strategic plan. As we started to emerge from the fiscal crisis in FY16 and '17, our focus was to add instructional positions back to the budget. Over the past two years, 19 positions, 19 teacher positions and six par educator positions were added. In fiscal year '17, the teacher pay scale was at the top third of comparative school division, again, as set forth in the strategic plan. And this last bullet addresses the extensive amount of information pertaining to the allocation of resources included in our budget document and this takes me to this next slide. This is just one of the many charts in our budget document. I use this chart because it's one of the requirements of our ASBO Meritorious Budget Award Program. The award criteria requires that we provide statistics on what ASBO terms as the academic efficiency of dollars spent. So to satisfy this requirement, we compare our per pupil expenditures to our performance measures as it relates to standardized testing. The information on this slide comes from the Department of Education. Let me point out that the table at the top right corner is the per pupil expenditures. This data is for fiscal year 2016, which is the most recent data we have available. The three tables at the bottom of the slide are SOL and graduation data for FY2017. This is the most recent data that we have available. But if we look at the table for per pupil expenditures, you can see that for FY16, YCSD had the lowest per pupil expenditure among our comparative divisions. Even though we're showing the FY17 data and this is the most recent, this is similar to FY16. York County was still the top of the comparative divisions. The numbers changed, just actually, the numbers got a little bit better in FY17, but the 16, 17 data has changed. You will note in the three charts at the bottom of the slide that we were number one in the same comparative group and I believe this data supports the fact that, one, our teachers are doing an outstanding job in the classroom and, two, that our division, we are doing, as a division, we're doing an excellent job of allocating the resources that we have. Are there any questions related to this presentation? Okay.
All right, no other questions. Thank you, Mr. Bowen, for that update on the strategic plan. Next, we have the strategic plan status update on goal five relating to performance measures. Dr. Shandor?
Yes, and once again, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Bowen, who is gonna kick this one off and then Mr. James Lash, where's James? James, if you wanna go to the podium. So they're gonna do this presentation together, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. The second objective under goal number five states that performance measures will be used as an ongoing means of guiding efficient, effective, service-oriented operations. In the finance department, there are a number of processes that we oversee. This includes the budget, the annual financial audits, financial reporting, purchasing, accounts payable, grants accounting, and payroll. We've established a number of performance measures for each of our processes to determine the efficiency and the effectiveness of the work that we do. I'm not going to review all of the measures that I have listed, but I do want to highlight a few that I believe are critical. If we look at items one and two, talk about our audit reports. There are two audits conducted annually, sorry. The first is an audit of our comprehensive annual financial report and the second is an audit of our student activity funds. And in FY17, we received an unmodified opinion for both, which is the highest you can receive. And items three and four refer to our reporting process. For the CAFER and annual budget document, we have consistently been recognized by national organizations such as ASBO, which is the Association of School Business Officials and the Governmental Financial Officers Association for reporting excellence. This is important because it shows that our CAFER and budget document conformed to the best practices in financial reporting, which is essential in building trust with the taxpayers and other stakeholders. Skip down to the accounting processes. Item seven states that we will process all payments within 10 business days of receipt. This is important because, one, paying our bills in a timely manner helps to maintain positive vendor relationships and, second, state law requires that we pay our vendors within 30 days. So in FY17, we processed over 4,500 payment vouchers and 100% were paid within the 10 days. Item 10 states that all previous year federal grants will have a zero balance by September 30. When grants are awarded to school division, there's an expectation that we utilize all the funding. We have a number of staff that are responsible for managing our grants and ensuring that the funds are spent in accordance with program requirements and in a timely manner. For 2017, 100% of all grants were spent down with no funds returned to the state or federal government. And items 14 and 15 refer to our purchasing or P-card processes. Item 14 states that the purchasing card, ACH payment, is made no later than the due date. This is important so the division is not assessed late charges. For FY17, all payments were made by the due date. And for number, item 15, staff performs an internal audit of P-card holders. Our goal is that every P-card holder run to go at least one review each year. This helps to ensure that staff are using P-cards as intended and are not circumventing purchasing procedures. Under the budget and financial reporting, item 19 states that we will process all purchase requisitions within two business days of receipt. In FY17, 661 requisitions were processed and all were done within the two business days. And one item under payroll, item 29 states that we will maintain a 98% to 100% accuracy rate in processing payroll checks. There was a change in business practices a number of years ago. It's rare that we actually issue a payroll check. Everything's done by ACH. So shifting our process from a manual check to electronic fund transfer has certainly helped in the timely delivery of payroll. However, it does not mean that mistakes can However, it does not mean that mistakes cannot occur in reporting and tabulation of time, which could cause an employee's pay to be incorrect. For FY 17, YCSD processed over 36,000 EFTs, electronic fund transfers, with an accuracy rate of 99.77%. And this concludes my presentation this night, this evening, on goal number five.
One quick question, if I may, and as I listen to you, there was a time, and I'm dating myself, when, and this goes back to technology improvements, if something goes down in school and they put a work order in, how long does it take in those repairs to go? Is this, will this fall under the same area?
Go ahead, Carl.
Yes, Mr. Lash is going to talk about that during his portion about performance measures.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Any other questions for Mr. Bone? All right, well, that will transition to Mr. Lash's presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, Dr. Shandor. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you this evening concerning goal five of the fiscal year 13 through 17 strategic plan. This presentation will close out the updates on our old strategic plan. Bill Gates reminds us that organizations strive to focus on customer service and performance. The objective of goal five is, "Performance measures will be used as an ongoing means of getting efficient, effective, service-oriented operations." The first area of discussion is transportation and vehicle maintenance. The two measures are total operating cost per regular and exclusive student mile, as well as bus road breakdowns per 100,000 student miles. Exclusive student miles pertains to students with disabilities that receive special transportation. In total operating cost, you'll notice a slight decrease over the three-year period. This is driven mainly by the cost of fuel and parts. In the second measure, bus road breakdowns, you'll notice a decrease. Factors that can affect this measure are an increase in new bus purchases, as well as our ability to repair buses in the field, so towing is not required. The next area of discussion is building, maintenance, and custodial services. In the first measure, HVAC units per technician, you will see an increase over the past three years. This measure does not include boilers, pumps, cooling towers, chillers, kitchen refrigeration, or kitchen electrical equipment, such as ovens and warmers. In the next measure, safety work orders, there is a slight increase in the completion rate. As we continue to focus on safety issues, we also respond to requests to upgrade existing systems beyond the ways they were initially designed and installed. When working through new situations, some of the requests become more complex. As always, safety issues are addressed immediately, and the maintenance department continues to place building safety as one of its highest priorities. The third area is network administration. This encompasses all the wired and wireless networks and the management of the servers and storage of data. As you will notice, the number of wireless devices connecting to the network dropped slightly in fiscal year 17. Devices connecting to the network include iPhones and Android devices, as well as many iPads, iPods, and Chromebooks. We also have Kindles, Nooks, et cetera. The last measure, user documents and files stored, has increased from last year. This is significant because as the number of documents and files saved rise, additional storage space will be required to meet the demand. Our next area this evening is computer maintenance. This is the maintenance and repair of the division's computer hardware, including computers, monitors, AC protectors, printers, document cameras, VCRs, wireless keyboards, and mice, in addition to resolution of software issues through technicians at the computer help desk. I'm pleased to report that the IT department continues to resolve a hand percentage of issues on the same day the issue is reported. This maximizes the opportunity for students and teachers to utilize technology in the instructional program. Issues that can't be resolved in one day are often caused by aging equipment or equipment that needs to be returned to the manufacturer. While discussing computer maintenance, care must be taken to ensure the system infrastructure is maintained and regularly updated, as servers and switches are subject to failure with Our final measure this evening is energy management. You will notice a slight increase in the cost of electricity per 1,000 students square feet. This is affected by the actual cost per kilowatt hour, as well as changes in weather patterns. In uses of electricity, a decrease was experienced. Finally, electricity cost avoidance slightly decreased over the previous year. Examples such as geothermal HVAC systems, occupancy scheduling, internal and external LED lighting retrofits, occupancy sensors, and HVAC upgrades have resulted in savings. The division continues to look for savings in all areas possible. I'll go ahead and answer any questions you have at this time.
Can we go back to slide four, please? Total operating cost per regular student mile for FY 17, is that a result, or how much of that is a result of the new software that improved the bus routes and?
That's not. You'll see, you'll possibly see a change next year.
Okay. Do you have any projections about percentage of change, maybe?
Not at this time, no.
See work orders related to computers. If it was something non-computer related, is anything non-related, if a work order comes in, generally, how long does it take to get that repaired from our schools? Any idea?
Great.
To correct it.
Can you repeat that again, Mr. Saywood?
If it's non-computer related, and the reason I asked the question sometime back, we were feeling as though work orders coming from the schools, and it wasn't a good enough turnaround time of repair. So we see this for computers. If it's non-computers, if a principal calls and says something's broken, generally speaking, how long does it take to? I know it depends on how bad the break or whatever is.
It also depends on the priority of other problems and other things.
Generally speaking, any idea?
It can vary, like Dr. Shandor said. Sometimes it's a day. It depends if we have to order parts or not. Some of our HVAC equipment, some we can get at a supply house the same day, and some has to be ordered from a warehouse or whatnot. So it can be anywhere from a day to maybe for critical items.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Well, we're on the subject of computers, maintenance. So 85% of your problems are resolved in the same day. What percentage of those generate trouble tickets with Microsoft or cause you to use the Microsoft Premier Plus contract that we have?
So the Microsoft Premier contract is brand-new to us, this year, the first time we've used it, so I would not have any statistics yet on that.
Okay, so, so before that, you generated trouble tickets with Microsoft, is that correct?
These are, so these are the, so these trouble tickets are people calling our internal help desk, and they're user problems, or they're mechanical problems, that your computer monitor has gone out, or a printer has jammed, or I forgot my password, or can you help me with how do you recover a file that I can't find? These are, these are user-computer problems.
Okay, all right, makes sense.
If there's no other question, thank you, Mr. Bone and Mr. Lash, for that presentation.
Thanks, Mr. Lash. Thanks, Mr. Bone.
So next, we have the strategic plan status update on goal five, objective relating to safe, secure environments. Dr. Shandor?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to call Dr. Aaron Butler to the podium, and his presentation, he's director of school administration, he's going to provide an update on goal five with a strategic plan related to maintaining efficient, safe, and secure environments. Dr. Butler?
Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, Dr. Shandor. Thank you for this opportunity to present to you this evening concerning goal five of the 2013-17 strategic plan. This presentation will close out the updates on our old strategic plan. American founding father Benjamin Franklin is credited with saying, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." To ensure that all York County students can learn in a safe, secure, and appropriate environment, the division has taken preventative and proactive measures to ensure building safety and provide training for staff in accordance with division policy and state regulations. Under goal five, efficiency and safety, staff will support safe and secure educational environments. To this end, the Department of Operations has consistently collaborated with the Assistant County Attorney, law enforcement, and fire and life safety in developing and presenting topics on safety to administrators, teachers, substitute teachers, and custodians. The division continues to provide training on topics such as workplace safety, energy management, badges, security, and bloodborne pathogens. These topics are presented to current and new staff to ensure a safe and efficient environment for students. During new teacher orientation, members of school administration provided training for all new teachers on standard YCSD safety procedures and best practices for maintaining secure classroom environments. York County School Division continues to lead the way in the local area with the administration of drills to include intruder and fire drills. Several divisions and law enforcement agencies have come to YCSD to observe drills and seek assistance in planning their own drill modules. In addition to intruder and fire drills, the division conducts several severe weather drills throughout the year. The school division is required to hold two drills within the first 20 days of school, one in January, and one additional drill during the second semester. Per code of Virginia, a school safety inspection is completed annually with law enforcement, maintenance staff, and the safety and compliance officer for our school division. The inspection covers the exterior as well as interior of the building. Any work orders that need to be written are completed during the inspection. Inspections include such things such as lighting, landscaping, doors, and windows. In addition to school safety inspection, a playground inspection is conducted monthly at each elementary school by the safety and compliance officer to ensure that there are no hazards. These inspections include such things as mulch level, loose or missing parts, and corrosion. Building inspections continue to be conducted during the year by the chief operations officer, the safety and compliance officer, and maintenance staff. The interior and exterior of the buildings are reviewed. Operations staff looks for items that needed to be addressed to ensure a safe and efficient functioning building. Information gathered from these inspections helps the operations department plan for future operations and capital projects. The division continues with the plan to build security vestibules in the schools. The security vestibule provides an additional layer of security by directing visitor traffic to the front office and eliminates visitors entering the building without signing in with the front office staff. This year, as you can see in the picture, security vestibules were installed at Yorktown Elementary School, at Bethel Manor Elementary School, as part of the renovation process. TAB Elementary School is scheduled for a security vestibule installation this summer as part of the renovation process. The division has equipped, has been equipped with automated external defibrillator devices for more than 10 years. Operations staff inspects and replaces the batteries and pads on a regular basis to ensure the equipment is up to date. Additional AED units have been installed at Bailey Field and at the football field at Bruton High School. The division has used a weatherproof and heated enclosure for the Bruton High School and Bailey Field units to ensure the AEDs are ready to be used when needed. Through a special grant from the Williamsburg Health Foundation, the York Park Ocean Sheriff's Office acquired 150 trauma bags, which contain grab-and-go trauma kits to distribute throughout the school division. Training is being scheduled to teach staff how to use the various safety materials in the incident of a major crisis situation. Sufficient external lighting helps keep school division sites safe from vandalism and accidents due to limited light. The division continues to upgrade exterior as well as interior lighting systems. As you can see in the picture, as part of renovation process, lighting was improved at Wall and Mill Elementary School. Additional upgrades were made at Bailey Field, Bruton High School, Queens Lake Middle School, Mount Vernon Elementary School. To increase student safety while traveling on division buses, the transportation department has purchased new buses with a dual-stop sign, and has also been a part of pilot with new LED lights to increase student safety. In 2017, YCSD was awarded the John T. Hannah Award, Recognizing Traffic Safety Excellence in Hampton Roads by the Drive Safe Hampton Roads Traffic Safety Organization. The award is based on traffic safety activism. On February 21 of this year, YCSD will receive an additional award from the Drive Safe Hampton Roads Committee, initiative to train, to train pupil transportation professionals on how to safely evacuate a school bus in the event of a fire with our Smoke the Bus training As part of the new renovations, modern public announcement and intercom systems are being installed, allowing building administrators to make alerts and announcements from any part of the school building. The new intercom systems also allow classroom teachers to quickly notify main office staff of emergency situations. Yorktown Elementary School and Bethel Manor Elementary School are model examples of the new intercom features as shown in the picture from Yorktown Elementary School. As I shared at the beginning of the presentation, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." York County School Division continues to review practices and procedures to ensure safe and efficient learning environments. Thank you for this opportunity. I am available for questions.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ladies first.
One quickie, you mentioned as far as the security vestibules. With TAB coming online this summer, is that the last elementary school to have, how many elementary schools still need them?
You know the number offhand?
I can name them. Mount Vernon does not have one. DARE Elementary, Seaford, Coventry.
So we still have a ways to go.
We still have quite a few. Yeah, I think we're about halfway through all of the schools. I think, I think we have, we have five at the elementary, two at the middle, and two at the high. So we, we've made a lot of improvements in that area.
Thank you.
In regards to the defibrillators, what about the baseball fields, field hockey, those types of areas? Maybe not as popular as the football fields, but you still have congregations of people?
Well, I mean, since Bailey Field is used for field hockey, they're located at Bailey Field, but I'll check.
Mr. Anderson?
I've also seen field hockey games at Grafton.
Right.
Baseball games at Grafton.
Fantastic.
Mr. Anderson, each high school has a portable defibrillator that the athletic trainers can take with them whenever they're working with athletes, whether it's during the game or during a practice. Those are available at the schools as well.
And I'd like to point out, one of our AEDs made a save last school year of a student at Grafton High School. Definitely well worth the investment.
EpiPen, do they ever travel, the EpiPens, these other, another of the schools? Do they ever take those with them, with the defibrillators?
Well, without, I'm not certain what the athletic trainers would do, but as you know, each school has stock.
Yeah.
And I was certain that athletic trainers would have something with them in case of emergency.
But I wouldn't even think that any child on a team would have a history, because you would have to have a physical for a child being on a team. So then, if that child is allergic or has an allergy, and EpiPen has been prescribed, that goes where child goes.
You would hope so, yeah.
All right. If no other questions, thank you, Dr. Butler. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Butler.
Thank you.
Now, Dr. Shandor, we have a presentation that the board had asked you to do a culmination of the early start times that we've been looking at for several years.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Richardson. So at the November 20 regular meeting, the board requested that staff share a timeline of work to date on the school start time topic. So Dr. James and I are going to review just some information with the board this evening about start times. So I'll turn it over to Dr. James.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. I'll just take a few moments to kind of walk through what the board has done in previous years relative to our school start times. to school start times. So in the spring of the 2012-2013 school year, the Board asked for information on the topic of school start times. So with that, during the June third, 2013 work session, six scenarios were brought into the Board about how to possibly change school start times in the York County School Division. So, of course, we had summer, and then in the fall, we again revisited that in the fall of the 2013-2014 school year to look at the six scenarios that were presented in June. We also looked at points of consideration for those options, what things need to be changed, what issues need to be addressed. That information was also presented to the Board, and the Board determined at that time that was too preliminary with the information to look for feedback from the community. So throughout the winter and the spring, we continued to look at that information. The six scenarios were changed to four possible options that were then narrowed to two options, and then we began to look at the considerations and the possibilities of those two options. And in the spring, of course, Dr. Williams was then superintendent during that school year. He had a separate job as another School Division, so then the Board decided to table that discussion because the Division was now in the midst of a superintendent's search. So with that, I'll turn it to Dr. Shandor.
Thank you. In that search, you found, you found me. So I'll jump on the next, the next slide here. So 2015, 2016, I took a team of YCSD leaders to Fairfax County Schools. We met with Dr. Garza and her team. They shared the many challenges that they faced, including the many logistical issues surrounding the DC area. They also shared with us that this, that this work for the start times was twenty years in the making. So it took a long time for them to move forward with this. Also, Dr. Garza also shared with us that the Board passed a resolution committing the Division to push back high school start times past eight o'clock before she arrived. So when she got there, the direction was to move them forward. When we returned from that trip, if you recall, I returned, I reported out publicly and discussed our next steps. At that time, I talked a lot about the importance of educating our community. We developed an RFP for experts in the field of adolescent sleep research to bid on. During that spring, we followed our procurement process, and Midamir won that proposal. So then in the 2016-2017 school year, we did conduct a brief survey to gauge the community's awareness of this topic and how they would want to learn more about the topic. We then held the community forum at York High School on November twenty-eighth, 2016, where approximately forty-five people attended that event. We also posted additional materials which were developed and provided by the consultant on our webpage. When we had the community forum, a lot of the folks there submitted questions and concerns, so the consultants could sort of custom give us the information that our folks were.
Were there forty-five?
Forty-five or so, roughly. Again, I didn't count everyone in there, but it was roughly forty-five to fifty people. Lastly, we received the final report from the consultant in November. We shared it with the Board in November, and we also posted it on the website. So with that said, this concludes our review of the timeline on this topic, and I'll turn it over to the Board for discussion.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah. I'm going to talk on behalf of District Three, because it's the district I represent. There has, there has not been this push from District Three to change start times. Hasn't been there. Zero, actually. Even after the last blip in the media that put the topic back out there again for the masses of York County to hear that we were discussing or discussing, we've been discussing it since 2013, but there's this, there's no push. There's no outcry. There's no large numbers of folks that are saying, you know, "By golly, change the start times." Even when, I went the last couple of times during this whole process, we have these student forums that are held by the Youth Commission at our high schools, and even the students that are there that are mostly seniors, they don't want to go to school later. So they didn't even go along with the fact that they go to school later in the morning, they got to stay later in the afternoon. They didn't want that. I know there's been some other discussions, concerns, like for example, you know, the impact on academics. We just saw data tonight that we're, we're doing so much more for so little dollars, and our students are excelling, excelling. I mean, we have some really smart, gifted, great body of students that are making us really proud in the achievements that they make at our School Division. But then I step back and look at the whole global picture a little bit more and say, okay, well, budget priorities. We're driven, this entire Board, by decisions we have to make with the dollars we're given, and how we expend those dollars. Once again, we got briefed tonight about how many years we went going backwards, and we still haven't caught back up from that yet. And I have concern with anything that's going to allocate dollars in something other than instructional role that we deal in. Then, another issue, and that is our leadership team, our staff. Since 2012-13, they've seen this thing cycle and cycle. The Boards ask for information. They've worked and worked and worked, along with having to manage multiple new and developing projects and things that we put on them. And we reached this point of going, we got to move forward. We got to move on. And so I'm concerned that as new projects are developed, state mandates are being pushed, our staff just can't, we, as a Board, need to make a decision. We just can't keep pushing back on Carl and his people and everyone else on the leadership side at Central Office, that we trim back dramatically during those rough years and say, "Keep doing this, keep doing this," when they got thousands of other things to do. So just some things to think about. I mean, there's a lot, I could go on, there's no outcry of the community in York County saying, "By golly, change the start times." Not there.
I'm going to be similar to Mark. I'm going to take it a little different direction, though, but I agree with him. When we started this whole discussion about changing the start times, we had two other activities on the, on the agenda at the same time that we overworked staff with. One was attendance zone, the other was bus efficiency. So we were looking at three costly things going on, and we weren't sure how that was going to happen. We were hoping to bring a new school on, on board, but that, and as far as Sam's Club, that may not make it anytime soon. But I was vocal about District One because I want to think we are the most widespread district, and it was very, very important to me that all of the households in District One knew what we were doing and our options. I have not had anyone come to me, and I'm in the grocery store, I'm at church, I'm in the community, I'm at work. I have not had people say to me, "Don't change the start times." I even, initially, I went to some young people who just graduated from the county and asked, "Okay, think about it. Would you, you know, tell me what you want." I had one or two saying, "Change it." I still have one or two saying, "Leave it as it is. Leave it as the early time." So it's something we have to make a decision on.
Any other comments?
Well, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mark.
I know we're in a discussion mode. What I like to do is to move us into a discussion mode on a matter. I like to move a motion that we keep the York County Public School start times the same, and in any further discussion on this matter. And I welcome a second so we can move that into more discussion.
There's been a motion and a second to keep the start times currently as they are. Is there any other discussion?
So, being the newest member, and knowing that my predecessor was one of the driving voices behind the school start times, I've naturally picked up that flag. I even, when I started my campaign, I even created a website, started a three-part blog series on changing start times. After the second part, I ended it because the research that I was reading pointed to improved academics with later start times. It pointed to everything that you hear, but none of the research addressed the ripple effect. It didn't affect, it didn't address that it doesn't just affect parents and children, because now you have to change the schedules of teachers, custodial workers, athletic departments, athletic schedules, everything. And talking to as many stakeholders as I possibly could to include a lot of the people that I just mentioned, none of the teachers wanted the start times changed. None of the students that I talked to wanted the start time changed. Start times changed. And we have in our presence tonight a very active student, Gracie Sears, rising junior at Grafton, homecoming representative, involved in field hockey or lacrosse, you name it. Okay? And I'm not seeing it either. But the, but the point that drove it home for me was after I met with Dr. Shandor and his staff back in the summer, and Mr. Wu particularly got a feel for the budget, I did more research. I don't know how much we spent already, but you're talking anywhere from another $500,000 to $2 million. That's, that's just a start. That, that's not the long-range effect of this. And I feel like Mr. Medford does, we're driven by the budget. We're driven by money decisions. I don't see it in our budget. I don't see how we can do it. I don't, I did not have any parents or anybody like that while I was out campaigning, address this. So if it's okay with the Board, I'll second Mr. Medford's motion.
I beat you to it. That's why you're talking.
So other discussion, Dr. George?
Yeah, you know, I'm, I also have not had an outcry from District Five, and I think for me, it's more, you know, every day at my office, I probably see thousands of people, and most of them are York County School Division parents and, and students and grandparents and everything else. And so I certainly feel like, you know, I would have heard a significant amount at this, at this point if that were the sentiment. So I have not. I mean, certainly there's been a handful of people that have talked to me about it, and there are people who would like for that to happen. And I don't fault them for that. I mean, I just think life is about priorities, and, and, you know, maybe prior to 2007, you know, it was easier to do things that you wanted to do. You know, we've had to be incredibly, incredibly hands-on about what we pick and how we prioritize things now. And I think this, you know, to make this change now would, would be going in a different direction than we've done for the last, at least my ten years on the Board here in terms of our priorities. So, you know, I, I agree with you. You know, in a perfect world, yeah, maybe it would be good, but I just don't see any, any way we can do this now, and feel good about when we've got other things on the table that are so incredibly pressing.
And I think I agree with most of the sentiment on the Board as far as budget priorities. I wrestled with this for many months since being, becoming on the Board for over a year. Our dropout rates are super low. Our academics are high. So I don't, I mean, yeah, can you approve those by percentage point? I just don't know that that meets the budget priority for, for that. So I agree with a lot of the sentiments everybody said. Of course, the scheduling issues, and the big thing I've heard from one or two parents only is the scheduling issues for childcare, and they just felt like it would be a big hearting. And one of the parents was a teacher, that it would cause a big financial burden to them to change the start times, because many parent schedules are worked around, their work schedules are worked around the student's schedule already. So it's difficult for them to go back and change their, their work. But at this point, I think, unless there's any other further discussion from the Board?
Call the motion.
All right. If there's no further discussion, Ms. Ford?
I'm most satisfied by Mr. Medford, and second, I'm Mrs. Haywood, maintaining the start times as they are and in further discussion. Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Medford?
Yes.
Yes. And it'd be good to remind folks that one day, a long time from now, maybe, if three or more people on this Board decide to do something different, then it would, it could be brought back, but it would take three or more people, the majority of the Board, to do something. At this point, it's, it's done.
Our regular meeting will begin at seven o'clock upstairs in the Boardroom, so if there's no further questions from the Board.
Can I ask one quick, quickie, if I may?
Sure can.
I'm going back to the December work session, and we looked at a variety of things. One was to look at the percentage of students, military students in our schools. We looked at enrollment across our schools. We were also looking at the diversity across our schools, and we were looking at school by school. So whenever we can get that information, would still be very, very helpful.
This was about, this was about staff, correct?
Students, students, students as staff, no.
Yeah, the diversity piece, I'm going to have to prepare.
Okay, thank you.
So Dr. Carol's preparing it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. So if there's nothing else from the Board, this meeting is adjourned until we meet upstairs at seven.